Chair Gos.
Here.
Commissioner Noble.
Here.
Commissioner Waters.
Here.
Commissioner Swab. And Commissioner Marino is excused, so you have a quorum.
Thank you, Don.
Everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Everyone be seated. We'll start with the approval of minutes. These are for the regular meeting minutes of January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two. I need a motion to approve?
I'll make him... Go ahead.
A move that we approve.
Second.
Have a motion in a second? All in favor say aye.
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 Alright, next we have our consideration of public comments. Those wishing to address the Planning and Zoning Commission need not request permission in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time pursuant to ARS thirty-eight dash four-three-one. Don, do we have any?
No, we do not.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll move on to old business. The zoning code text amendment Z zero-two-one dash zero-zero-zero-one. A request from Michael Avitable applicant for the next amendment of section four dash eight-zero-point-zero-seven-zero-point-G of the Kingman zoning code. The proposed text amendment is to allow residential properties to have unimproved driveways to parking spaces that are in excess of the minimum parking space requirements if the spaces are located behind the front of a residential building and behind a fence or other barrier or beyond the required setbacks of the particular zone.
Ready for it?
Ready for you.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. I'm grateful to be here. We... To kind of speed this up a little bit, we noticed that all of you were here the last two meetings on this issue, so, or on this item. So, we're gonna jump to what was, what, how the meeting ended last, last time, and that was you made a motion to have us, staff, go and put together some formal language that could be adopted in code that was regarding the driveway surface requirements for residential driveways accessory that is based on the underlying zoning of the property. So, with that, just wanna jump in here. We did meet on December fourteenth and January eleventh, but we actually discussed things even earlier than that. But as a formal hearing, those were the two dates to consider this case. We did put together that formal language for, that could be codified, and that was given to you, sent to you in memo form and available at our offices and on the internet. The modified version, as I mentioned, was based on setbacks. Further, the Commission, as we understood it, wished to limit that to the front yard setbacks only, and I'll show you that on a diagram, how it actually looks in graphics. So, if prepared tonight, the Commission, we recommend, make a formal recommendation to the City Council, and in preparation, we have provided language for three possible motions. We'll go over those in a second. And just for you and the public, if, if you do recommend approval or denial or something, it'll go to the City Council, who will consider the matter likely in February, we hope, if, if you decide tonight. And then if the Council approves any kind of amendment, then from that night, it would, the effect, the new ordinance would be in effect thirty days after their decision. So, I hope that you can see these slides. It's hard to see some details. But what we have here is, we showed you different slides last time of how the driveway improvements based on distances, based on this and that, how it would look on a larger lot, that, larger lots that we usually have, like the forty-eight-point-four-eight acre lots, half acre, and then some smaller lots such as the point-one-nine acre lots. So, that's why these two are, are different sizes, and what you'll see on here is, the one on the left is the smaller lot, and it's, it's basically showing you two residential lots or parcels next to each other. One is a corner lot, and the other one to the right is, is, would be considered an interior lot. And same with the lots or parcels on the right picture there. Those represent a corner lot on the left and an interior lot on the right. So, the modified version of, of how we put in language for the code, for your consideration, would be that driveway surfacing, as it is required now for concrete, asphalt, or other durable dustless material, as, or as approved by this community development manager, would be required in the areas I show in, in gray, light color gray there. So, on the bottom of both of those pictures, you can see gray. The black dash line there is the setback line, the required setbacks that people have to meet when they construct buildings, et cetera. On the picture on the left, the property line, you can see it's a faint yellow line on the right side and, and on the north side of that, if you can see that. And then it, the property line kind of fades away as you look at what those gray area, the gray strip that is actually a sidewalk, because a lot of times the property line is right up against the sidewalk. So, we showed that here where, in fact, this, the property line does meet the set, or meet the sidewalk edge. In that case, we showed how this proposal, this, the modified setback requirement, shows that on the bottom there, on, on this picture on the left, in the point-one-nine acre lots, the gray area, they have a driveway that would be paved there on the right, and then the hatch marks show a driveway that would go to the back of their lot into that purple accessory structure. And we showed those, that the black hatch marks show two different directions on the corner lot, just in case they were decided one or the other. So, on the one on the south side there, the bottom, that is gray and would be required to be the, basically the concrete or asphalt, up to that dashed black line again, which is the setback line. After that point, all the way back to that accessory building, it would only be required to be gravel or some other surface, similar surface. We're not gonna, we didn't specify any requirement for that type of material to be used, so we won't be measuring, you know, six inches of gravel or anything like that. So, that's just the language in there, so that it's some form of surface that we expect to be durable and, and, and somewhat lasting and somewhat dust, can control dust. On the hatch mark area that goes out to the left on that corner lot, you can see the, the modified version of this setback requirement shows the hatch marks going clear out to the sidewalk edge beyond that setback. That again is that hatch mark would only be gravel. So, nothing on the left side or the, what we call the street side of, of the corner lot, nothing would be required there as far as concrete or asphalt. Only, and it's in the language of the code, there may be, for a part of a right-of-way permit through the engineering department, they may have to do some improvements that, that are required for that, but nothing in the zoning code. To show you on the larger lot, so the picture to the right, look at the corner lot there, and in the upper left there, you, you see a similar situation where the hatch marks go out to the public right-of-way, and in, in this case, the property line is yellow there, as you can see, and in many cases on our larger lot subdivisions, they don't have sidewalks. So, their property line ends, but dirt continues till the side, or the street edge. And in this case, I show that here, that the gray area there would be that potential improvement that's required by city engineering, that's outside of the zoning code. But beyond that, to, from left to right, to that accessory building, again, only gravel would be required. But if you go to the, the bottom of that larger picture, the driveway shown there show the gray representing the concrete and asphalt. And then after that setback line, all, it'd be hatch mark or gray area, gravel areas beyond that. And this, the code, as we proposed it, was to the required setback, which in most cases is twenty feet. In some cases, it's thirty feet on the larger lot subdivisions, but the code also states that in, in no instance shall it be less than twenty feet, just for those, maybe a unique situation where there's an exception, and it still needs to have some kind of distance applied to it. So, twenty would be the minimum, and then thirty or whatever the, the setback is required. So, that's kind of how we brought it to you tonight, and I know I said a lot of things, pictures worth a thousand words. I said probably a million words. With that, what we bring to you tonight is kind of where you left off last time with a decision to make, and that is, we proposed three potential motions or decisions that you could make, and those are, of course, recommendations to council. But one is, of course, possibility that you recommend denial of the case, any, any kind of change to the code. The second one be, would be approval as requested by the applicant. And then C, as I mentioned here, is approval as modified. It's that modified setback version. So, on there, on each slide, I tried to squeeze in the motions. I hope it's not too small, but you do have them in your packets. So, motion A is the denial. Motion B would be the approval of the applicant's proposal. And then C would be the, the modified setback version. And I can leave this up here, so you can look it over, and the audience can read some of the details. But essentially, what I told you is, is included in, in the highlight, or the red area, red text, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those for you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
I do. As you have reviewed this over again for the, the past two weeks, have you continued to think that this is the best option that will be most easily applicable to all, to all the residents? As well as meet the values and goals of the city plan?
I think, I, personally, as, because I do a lot of the residential reviews, I think it's pretty straightforward as far as applying it. When a, when a permit comes in, there's no ambiguity. It's just this or that, and I think it accomplishes with a limited distance for asphalt or concrete. I think achieves that dustless surface, that aesthetic goal or ideal that we're trying to get to in the, in the general plan. I think it accomplishes that, but doesn't extend it so far back that you could have a situation of three hundred feet back or something. So, I think as they come off their gravel surface from the rear, you know, they have thirty, twenty feet to kind of shake loose the gravel on their own driveway, and then as they come out onto the city street, hopefully, a lot of that would have been, would have fell off on their driveway, and it would keep the city streets cleaner. So, I think it does accomplish all the above.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I got a question, Gary. Basically, the, it's the last sentence. The driveway improvements may be required within the right-of-way. Can you go back to your slide?
Yeah.
For the point-one-nine acre lots on the corner there. You're showing the back of the sidewalk is basically on the property line there, is that correct?
Yeah.
So, typically, back walk is three-point-four feet, right, or under the old?
Well, very.
Four.
Are you talking about the street?
So, yeah, I, I'm just saying, between the back of the walk and the property line is where the concrete's gonna be, right?
Not necessarily. It's just if it's a unique road, unique situation, unique driveway, that engineering through the right-of-way permit process may need something in the right-of-way. That's up to their rules and regulations, but as far as zoning goes.
Taking it out of the P and Z code?
Yeah.
And leaving it up to engineering, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, we do in the zoning code still have the requirement that you need to connect to the street improvement-wise, but as far as in the case where we don't require any improvements, in, like in this case, the modified setback, when it does hit the right-of-way, that is no longer our concern. It's, it's engineering's.
Okay.
So... But if I could, on the larger lots, the corner lot, if you're looking there, where it has that little sliver of gray, that may be required by the right-of-way permit, but again, for zoning purposes, that, that doesn't exist.
So, we're, we're not concerned even on the larger lots and, under the P and Z code?
They still need to be connected to the street, but if there are no improvements required, then zoning wouldn't require them to connect anyway, other than, I guess, just gravel or something.
So, can we go back to that last sentence where it says that it's may be required? Can you kind of clarify what is meant by may be required?
Yeah, so driveway improvements may be required within the right-of-way, which is not the zoning codes, generally not the zoning codes domain. The right-of-way of an exterior side yard or rear yard is part of a right-of-way permit issued by the city. So, if, again, if there's a unique situation that's, that's needed there, then they need to have some kind of improvement outside of the property line, that would be determined by the city engineer. What this code language does, I think, it lets them know that the zoning code isn't concerned at this point, but there may be an expectation, so you might want to look into it further and maybe ask the engineering department.
Okay, so let, well, let's go back to the slide, then. My question would be, what about the interior lots? We're extending, we're requiring the driveway within the right-of-way there?
They have to connect. Any, any improved driveway basically has to connect to the street.
Alright.
And it's written that way.
Okay.
But if it's just gravel, it's not required.
Okay, I gotcha.
Thank you, Gary.
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna open it up for public comment, then.
Would you like me to leave this slide up or the motion slide or?
Um, why don't you leave that one up?
Okay.
It's fine. Hi, please approach and state your name.
Michael Avitable, resident Kingman. The only thing that I see here is that we're still in the backyards, requiring us to do an improvement in our own backyard, and that was the intent of the text amendment change, was behind the setbacks, that the residents should be able to do whatever they want in their own backyards. That's my only comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Hi, please come forward and state your name.
My name is Jeff Urb, and I'm a local builder and a resident here. Considering what was required before, I think this is a reasonable compromise. So, with regard to this, I just, I would much rather see this than what was there before, because on the larger lots, which a lot of the RV garages we build, there's three or four times the amount of concrete in a possible driveway than there is in the actual structure, and it just becomes, it just, it, it's, usually kills the, the job. They just can't afford to add the concrete to get the building they want. So, anyway, I urge the council to approve this, and I appreciate the compromise.
Thank you. Does anyone else have a comment? Okay, then I'm gonna close off public comments and open up commission discussion. You guys think?
I'd like the last option, so, I don't know what everybody else thinks, but... Is it option C?
Yeah.
Yeah, because we've got three. It's denial, accept as the applicant wrote it, or the setback.
I'm pretty satisfied that it meets most of what most people are looking for. I'm really happy about that. I'm considering Mr. Avitable's comments about having requirements for the backyard improvements of gravel. Are there any thoughts about that?
If I could chime in, it's just, I think it's a cheap solution that kind of honors what the city was going for in terms of dust abatement, at least nods in that direction. How enforceable it is, I don't know, but, I mean, it, at least it'll allow some sort of a, a basis for like a paved surface, even if they don't do like what we were probably thinking of with pavers or some sort of alternative. At, at least gets them started in that direction. So, I'm in favor of it personally.
I'm in favor of the setback option, as it's written.
Alright, are we gonna throw a motion out there?
Could just, I noticed the table that staff put together, where they queried all the different municipalities. Lake Havasu City, they currently don't have anything stipulated for the accessory buildings. And I just note that they have the highest, you know, property values in the county right now by far. So, what they're doing there is, is working in a way, you know, and they're not doing anything. So, I think we're, by reining this in a bit and removing some of the concrete requirements, it's not necessarily gonna hurt our property values, at least if you're looking at Lake Havasu City and their values. So, just an observation.
I'll make a motion that we select option amendment two, which is setback-based. Is that?
I think it's three.
Is that the right motion?
Commissioner, I, on the slide or in your packets, to help with motion language, we provided a template for you if you...
What page is that on?
On the... Of your memo, should be option, the bottom of page two and on three. It would be option C. Yeah, it would be option C, but you wouldn't have to read all the language of the code, just the motion, if you chose.
I make a motion that we approve G one A.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Don, can we get a roll call vote?
They're saying that's not right. G one A, is that right? Is that?
It's, yeah, it's motion C.
Okay. Alright, third time. I make a motion that we approve option C.
Second.
Alright, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Alright, can I get a roll call vote, Don? Commissioner Noble?
Yes.
Chair Gos?
Approve.
Commissioner Waters?
Approve.
Commissioner Swab?
Yes. Unanimous. Alright, the motion was approved. Congratulations, everyone.
Alright, next up, we have our new business, which is zoning code text amendment Z zero-two-one dash zero-zero-zero-two. A request made from Leonore Knudsen, applicant for the text amendment to the section three dash nine-zero-point-two-five-zero, recreational vehicle RV park of the Kingman zoning code. The proposed text amendment is to allow both movable and stationary units in RV parks, delete the minimum park size requirement, establish a standard for parking spaces for stationary RVs, reduce setback requirements, and modify screening, parking, and recreational area requirements. Richard?
Sorry, look, trying to locate the, there we go. Good evening. This is a zoning code text amendment, amending section three dash zero, three dash nine-zero-point-two-five-zero, recreational vehicle RV park of the Kingman zoning code. The applicant is Leonore Knudsen, and the request is to amend this section of the, of the zoning code to allow both movable and stationary units in RV parks, delete the minimum park size requirement, establish a standard for park spaces for stationary RVs, reduce setback requirements, and modify screening, parking, and recreational area requirements. Now, this slide shows the various sections of the zoning code that pertain to this request. Currently, RV parks are allowed by conditional use permit in the C two and C three zones. They are also allowed in the transect zones, which are downtown, T five G and T five MS, which is Main Street, by conditional use permit. The section that would be amended is the section that provides the regulations and standards for RV parks. And then within section five of our code, we have definitions for recreational vehicle, recreational vehicle park, and travel trailer. So, the proposed text amendment, if approved, would accommodate future consideration of an RV park as proposed in the downtown area. The concept would have airstream trailers with short-term Airbnb-type rentals. There is a narrative in your packet, as well as a concept plan, that's really provided for information only, because this text amendment is not site-specific, so any changes to the RV park standards would be applicable to all zones that allow RV parks by conditional use permit. If this text amendment is ultimately approved by the council, the P and Z Commission will hear a separate, a separate hearing, will hear the CUP request. So, this is the, next several slides I'll show you is the applicant's proposal. The first item that would be changed in anything that's been proposed to be changed is shown in red. Text to be added is, is underlined, and text to be struck out is, is with a strike through. The first item that would be added would be a statement regarding the allowance for both stationary and permanently set RV units. The second option, or item would be to remove the minimum size requirement for a lot in which an RV park is allowed. That would be taken out, and it would be replaced with language that says the area necessary to comply with open space, RV space size, and setback requirements in the section, both for movable RVs as well as stationary RVs. And that the density of the park would, would be, for those smaller parks, would be the proportionally equivalent of areas, for areas less than one acre. There'd be an added paragraph under park spaces in which stationary RV spaces would be allowed to be smaller than the minimum space requirement for a standard RV. But that could also be, the overall space size could still be determined by the city's zoning authority, which for CUPs is actually the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, just gonna go through those changes. Get no minimum park size. The consequence of that might result in more requests for RV parks on properties that may not have been able to be eligible for that request in the past. However, such requests would still require P and Z Commission review and approval. The distinction between movable and RVs and stationary RVs, currently there, always doesn't make that distinction. Stationary RV, stationary RV would be, example would be something like a park model unit. The applicant's concept is to have units that do not move, so this would not be a, a standard RV park where it'd be RVs coming in and going. That's the reason for the, the text change. Also, as I mentioned, stationary RVs would be allowed to have a smaller RV space. Currently, the minimum size is... Currently, the minimum size is about nineteen hundred and fifty square feet. Based upon what and how the definition of an RV and the size of an RV, an RV space could be around four hundred and eighty square feet if this text amendment is approved, which is like sixteen by thirty. The the current standard actually assumes that there'll be a vehicle, single vehicle parking space within the RV space, which is nine by eighteen. If that were removed and placed elsewhere in the park, you know, we could support having a smaller space for the, for the RV RV space. Not quite clear why it has to be so much smaller, but it, the size could still be subject to CUP approval and Planning Zoning Commission oversight. The, the next section deals with setbacks, which would reduce the minimum setbacks for the RV parking pad from twenty to ten feet. It would also allow the side of the park that faces the street to have open visibility rather than be screened in all, on all sides, which is the current standard. And in alluding to the last comment about parking spaces, the, with ad language that would allow the parking space associated with the RV vehicle, the the car parking space to be either with the RV or in another location within the RV park. Just to kind of go over those changes, the, the minimum setback for all structures in C three district from any residential use is ten feet currently. So this would be similar, it would be applicable though to all property lines. The only exception to this would be Stockton Hill Road. We do have a fifteen-foot setback for buildings along Stockton Hill Road. There is a possibility that someone may want to do a RV park along Stockton Hill Road in the future in the C two or C three districts. So some consideration should be given to maintaining that fifteen-foot setback, at least along that, in that situation. The screening situation, as I mentioned, would not be any requirement for screening along the street side under the proposal. And which is understandable in the applicant's case, why they would not want screening there. However, there may be regular RV parks where we would still want to see screening along the street. There is a statement in the Kingman general plan that talks about maintaining aesthetically pleasing streetscapes. So our proposal, staff's recommendation would be to leave that decision on screening along the street to the Planning Zoning Commission as part of your CUP review. And then the final section that the applicant is proposing to change would be a statement regarding open fires at RV parks. Will be prohibited unless within a fire ring or barbecue. That's pretty much what we would expect now, but it it puts the language in there, which makes it a little clearer, which is something we can support. And then the final change would be to reduce the minimum square footage required per RV space for a communal recreational area from two hundred square feet to one hundred square feet and remove the minimum size for the communal recreational area. Going up through that second change, as I mentioned, that change would reduce the minimum recreation space area per RV space by fifty percent. That could have a significant impact on larger sort of standard RV parks. If you, if you take that recreation area requirement out. The impact on the smaller parks with a twenty-five hundred square feet, that's really only applicable to smaller RV parks that are twelve spaces or less. This particular park would have about eight units, as I understand it. So as to not impact those larger parks, staff is recommending that that two hundred square foot per space requirement be retained. But we could support removing the minimum square footage for the, that's otherwise in that, in the, in the code currently. So as far as public notification comments, we did notify the public by, by the, in the newspaper. There were no public comments received and we had one comment from city staff recommending approval of the request. As far as findings for text amendments, this is a requirement of the zoning code that text amendments be approved only if there's findings made that are determined each instance. First one is whether the text amendment is consistent with the Kingman general plan and other adopted plans and policies. B will not be detrimental to the public interest, health, safety, convenience and welfare. Is necessary to address and demonstrate community need. Is, D is necessary to respond to substantial changes in conditions or policy. And E, the proposed amendment is internally consistent with other applicable provisions of the code. So looking at each of these findings individually, first one's consistency with the general plan and other policies and plans. We do have sections of the general plan that deal with, including the land use element, as well as the redevelopment and public facilities and buildings element. They have several really goals and objectives, many of which are related to enhancing and preserving the downtown area, including the historical fabric. We also have a, as I mentioned earlier, a goal about having aesthetically pleasing streetscapes. Taking all together, we could see how this particular text amendment could support the, especially that location downtown. But we also need to keep in mind the goal of having, maintaining aesthetically pleasing streetscapes. And that could be impacted by changes to the screening requirements. Second is the potential impacts on public interest, health, safety, convenience and welfare. We don't anticipate there being a detriment to the city in those areas. As I mentioned, the clarification on where fires can may have in RV, in RV parks that probably could enhance public safety. And then the next one is the demonstration of community need and any substantial changes to conditions or policies. In the downtown area, actually extending along Antioch Vine, extending all the way out to West Beale Street, we have adopted an infill incentive district, and that includes the applicant's property. And this waives billing permit fees to encourage development and redevelopment in an area that the city has determined to be a blighted area. So amending these RV standards, especially when, especially coming in regards to the minimum lot size, would allow this particular site to be considered. It would potentially allow other properties to be considered for redevelopment for an RV park as well in other places in town. And that could reduce the blight, blight situation and encourage visitors to the downtown area. Reductions in space sizes and recreation areas, however, do need to be considered carefully as far as their impacts on, on the community. Finally, the consistency with other provisions of the code, as I mentioned, the, there is a setback requirement on Stockton Hill Road. We would recommend retaining that setback standard for any future RV park that might occur along Stockton Hill Road. So in, are your options this evening? You may approve the application for the text amendment as, as recommended or as requested by the applicant. You may recommend that the applicant's request be denied. Or you may recommend to the city council that the text amendment be approved with some staff recommended changes. And I'll go through those on the next slide. This first slide shows all the language as the applicant has proposed. And we're comfortable with the, the language as, as written. Next slide here, we've added the wording on, under A. It's the reference to the recreational vehicle space size. Say except as noted in paragraph D. And then paragraph D, we would add a line in there that says, that basically says that, that minimum size is if a vehicle spaces located at another designated location within the recreational vehicle park. And then leaving the language in there about the, ultimately that space size can be determined by the city's zoning authority, which again is the Planning Zoning Commission. Under the setbacks and separations, we added the language referencing what that is, is basically that Stockton Hill Road, fifteen-foot setback requirement. Under the screening, we're recommending a little different language in there and that would be where the screening would be required on the interior and rear lot lines of the park. However, as far as along the street, that would be determined by the city's zoning authority. So it'd be a case-by-case basis depending on what was being proposed. The rest of the language would be the same. And then the last change would be, again, leaving the minimum the square footage for the recreational, the communal recreational area at two hundred square feet, but taking out the minimum size for the, for the recreational area of twenty-five hundred square feet. So option C is the, is the is the option recommended by staff. Be happy to answer any questions you have, and the applicant is here this evening as well.
Thank you, Richard. I actually have one question. Could the applicant apply for a CUP and possibly have that approved without changes to the zoning code?
She, she could not because of the, primarily because of the size.
Okay.
Concern. Her property is about just over half an acre in size and the MIM's standard now is two acres.
Okay, thank you.
Rich, regarding the, the permanent, the permanence of the mobiles on the, the lot, what does that entail? Like, suppose one needs to be replaced because of a fire, would it have to go before a CUP review? Or they, could they replace it with a later park model that isn't, you know, stipulated in their plan?
Well, I think it would depend on, on what language it might be in the CUP. You could put language in there as to how many units. We, you know, as far as what constitutes a unit that is fixed to the ground, that's something we need to explore a little bit more. I don't, don't know exactly what that looks like, but we may have to look at some language in the CUP when it comes before you.
Sorry, but la- later on, say if they were to change out units, like, would, would the city have any say in what type of unit goes in there? In terms of like nineteen sixties, seventies trailers, could they be replaced with some other one? Like, what control would the city have over that at a later date?
So, you know, currently our control over age of units is really a manufactured homes. We don't, because these are considered really vehicles, they're trailers is what they are. And I imagine they would continue to be licensed by the state, they're not building. I don't know that we would have really any, any, any control of them replacing them. But, I mean, you might be able to put some stipulation in the CUP language that says how many units. I would say probably the number of units would be kind of your control. So they couldn't put more in there than, than what was approved.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have questions?
Yeah, I got a question, Rich.
Sure.
My understanding is that we're reducing the minimum size requirement of an RV space from two thousand to five hundred square feet. Is that right?
I'm gonna go back to that.
Like nineteen eighty to, or nineteen sixty to four eighty, I think.
Yeah.
Let me go back and find that slide here. Yeah, so, so currently the minimum size for an RV space in the standard RV park is thirty by sixty-five, so it's nineteen fifty. The applicant has said, has requested that the minimum size be one and a half times the size of the, of the trailer. We have a definition actually for, of RV in our code that mentions a minimum, a size of three hundred and twenty square feet. So taking that three hundred and twenty square feet, multiply that by one and a half, that's forty, four hundred and eighty square feet. So that would be the difference. So that is substantially smaller, although we would be, our, our recommended language would be, that would be allowed only in, in the instance of where the parking space was not part of that.
So all these, all the existing RV parks, they could basically quadruple in size if they put the infrastructure in.
Well, only, only if they had stationary, it'll only be for a stationary unit, so like a park model type unit.
So what's the definition of a stationary, because a lot of these, the residents at the RV parks, I mean, they're, they live there. You know, there, there's not that many that, right now, that I understand that are, you know, coming in for a couple of days. Most of them, they actually live there.
That's a good question. I, I don't, we would probably have to explore that a little bit further to, to nail down exactly what that would look like.
Okay, so can the CUP, can this portion of the text amendment be included in the CUP? And we would leave that alone?
When, when you say include with a CUP, you're referring to the.
Reducing the minimum, because I, I like the idea of what they're, what they're proposing. But I don't like the idea of reducing the minimum size of an RV space from two thousand to five hundred square feet.
So I think, I think in the language that I have proposed, it does give you the authority. So if you look at this statement, paragraph D, and under the city's, or under the staff's recommendation, it says, one, that the vehicle space would have to be elsewhere in the park. And that the, that the minimum area for the RV space is one and a half times the square footage of the stationary recreational vehicle unit, unless otherwise determined by the city's zoning authority. Might have to clean up exactly when that otherwise part falls into that sentence. But basically, it's still, you, you, you're, you're the authority that would still have the authority over the ultimate size of that space.
All right.
So just to follow up on what he's suggesting, is it possible for the applicant to ask for an exception in the CUP for this and to not change the, the city plan in this respect?
Are you saying, is it possible for them to ask to not do the text amendment and then just ask for an exception from the zoning ordinance?
Just this portion?
Just for that section regarding the minimum square footage?
Well, I, I would say probably no, if it's in the zoning, if it's in the code, this is, this is the minimum, that's what's required. The only way you can get relief from the code is through a variance process, which wouldn't be before you. So we would, you know, the language in there would give us the flexibility of, yeah, it could be much smaller, but it still gives you the ability to say, we, for these reasons, we believe the space size should be larger. And that would, getting back to the question about, would this mean that RV parks would double their space allowances? One, they couldn't do that without coming to you for a C, another CUP anytime they make changes that would require a CUP. And there'd have to be that control over exactly what they're proposing. And there might be good reasons that you would not allow a, a small, a small space. So I think there's still that control that, that we have built into the, built into the language.
The difference to me seems to be that one person would apply for a variance as opposed to a lot of people making applications before us. It, it means a difference of time and a bunch of applications. I don't know if I'm communicating well this thought. If, if they're asking for an exception, then that means dealing with one exception. If we're changing this aspect of the city plan, then that means that we're dealing with a lot of applicants who are asking for that change.
Well.
That's what it seems like to me.
I, I mean, someone can seek relief, and that's another path available to people. They can seek relief from the code as written. The thing about granting a variance is that it's in theory, I guess not in theory, but really by state statute, you're only to grant a variance if there's something unusual about the property because, because its shape, its size, its topography, its location, that you cannot meet the standard required of, of that location. It's not because the applicant is seeking to do something different there. So I'm not sure that what, what the applicant is seeking to do lends itself to a variance. I think what she's asking for in this text, text amendment I think what she's asking for in this text amendment is probably the better path, leaving you the ability to consider, giving you some authority over exactly what's ultimately approved.
Rich, is there any chance, I've seen hotels that are shaped like teepees, you know? Is there any chance this could fall under like hotel zoning somehow? I mean, if you look at the diagram, it's basically, it looks like a drive-in hotel almost.
Well, we looked at that initially when we were trying to figure out how to, how to even call this, because we did spend a lot of time exploring that. The thing is, what she's wanting to do is have airstream trailers. Airstream trailers are not structures. Our code refers to hotels, motels, buildings as structures. It's under the billing code. Trailers are not part of the billing code. They're a completely different thing. So the only way we really saw that we could accommodate the things that she was interested in doing was to look at modifying the RV park standards and build in some language there that gave that flexibility into the code.
Thank you.
And Richard, I just have one more question. And I'm not trying to be cynical, but about three years ago, we had somebody come before us and ask for an unusual situation change with a sign. And we ended up approving it, and then they built whatever they wanted in that spot by the hotel. I just wonder if we would be considering it differently if they were going to put in, like you said, like a bunch of nineteen-seventy trailers and make that kind of park versus, it sounds really nice when you hear like airstreams, but what kind of assurance do we have that it actually is going to be a nice RV park that is going to add to the downtown versus us approving it and then just any old thing getting thrown together?
I think it's how we craft the ultimate language of the conditional use permit. And the difference between this and the other text amendment that you alluded to for the sign, that was just a text amendment. The rest of it was administratively approved through our sign permitting process. This is a two-step process, so this comes back to you for the site-specific standards, the exact language of what you want them to do there. You can get pretty specific about what you'd like to see happen on that property, and we can build that into the resolution that the council ultimately approves if they go ahead and approve it.
Because I think we need to be a little bit more careful in the future.
I, I, I agree.
Okay. And then also, if we do change the code, will all the people who want to now make changes based on this code have to come before us as well?
Yeah, so if they, if someone wants to, they add spaces to an existing RV park, they would have to come through this CUP process.
Okay.
So there is that ability for you to review that.
All right. Does anybody else have any questions for Richard? Okay, thank you, Richard.
All right, thank you.
All right, I'm gonna open it up for a public comment. Please approach and state your name.
Thank you. My name is Lenore Knutson, and I am the applicant for this text amendment. This text amendment allows us to essentially build our dream. My partner and I, Tim Webb and I, have worked with an architect to come up with a site plan. I have a more recent version here than what you have in your packet, so I don't know if you want an updated version of it. But it is an opportunity, first, I purchased five blighted properties downtown. One is a Little Stone Building that has been vacant as long as any of us can remember. Continuing over to what was known as the Print My Pet Building that is also blighted. At the time I purchased it, there was a shack in the back that housed homeless people regularly. There is detritus, weeds, garbage on the property every single day. And we are proposing to make a vibrant addition to downtown with a vintage retro airstream community that fits with the downtown community's efforts to revitalize, to bring in neon, and to create a vibrant, walkable downtown. The Little Stone Building will become a walk-up ice cream shop. The Print My Pet Building will be a coffee shop. All of this development supports one another and supports downtown. The people who stay in the Airbnb vintage airstreams will be walking to the restaurants and the pubs over on Beale Street every day. We will be providing them with upscale airstreams to stay in, and they will be walking Kingman. Right now, that section is not walkable. That section is not safe. It's not attractive, and it's one of the first things that people see when they pull into town. We have requested a reduction in the size of lots. First of all, it's important to understand the difference between a traditional RV park where that size is required, because again, the vehicle that pulls that RV in is typically parked right next to it. That parking, which is approximately one hundred and sixty-five square feet, is also incorporated into that number that you mentioned. We had an early meeting with planning on zoning and fire and safety and engineering, and one of the concerns from fire and safety was that there would be cars parked right next to the RVs. So we have devised a plan where the parking for seven of the eight units is set up against the fence. We do have, I've worked my entire life on behalf of people with disabilities, and it is my ultimate goal to have one of these be ADA accessible, which is challenging with an airstream. But we are incorporating that into the architectural drawings for the site. And so when we looked at parking, there is only one of them that have, would have parking near the unit, and that's the ADA unit. Even still, we have a large patio area on that one so that it would accommodate wheelchairs and accessibility and ramps. These are stationary, meaning that they are going to be ground-set, they're going to be hooked into the sewer system individually, they're going to have mini-split air conditioners on them that are also ground-set. These are not vehicles that will be pulled in and out of a park. In a traditional RV park, there has to be room for pull-out, pull-in, maneuvering, possibly a much bigger unit than what we're gonna have here. So a lot of that space accommodates the what if you have a driver that needs to be able to maneuver in a park? What if you have someone who is parking next to their vehicle? What if you have someone who needs to pull through to get out of the park? That isn't the case here. They're bringing in their car, and everything is going to be there for them. In terms of the recreational space, which was one area that we also requested a reduction, again, this RV park that we are envisioning downtown with only stationary units doesn't need to have driveway space for people to pull in and out. It doesn't need to have additional road space other than a driveway in and a driveway out. It has some communal spaces, it will have a common shade structure. We have cornhole, we have Giant Django, we have some other activities, we have a picnic area. But in light of the fact that these are small units that will be set up for two people each, then it seemed reasonable to request the reduction to one hundred feet for the communal recreational space. If the, if the commission determines that the adopted language or the recommended language from city staff is appropriate, we can work with that. We already have more than that recreational space in here. But keep in mind that, again, these are stationary units, and all of the areas outside of the stationary unit is going to be common. People will be walking between units. This is two people each, this is not a large family that's going to be coming there. And we are discouraging, we will not be having open fires in any part of it. This is a downtown environment, the last thing we need is to increase fire hazards or to increase smoke or air pollution. So we will not be having open fires. In our communal shade structure, we will have a sealed gas fireplace for everyone's enjoyment. So the kinds of activities that we are building into this don't require the traditional campfire ring and the chairs sitting around it, or the, the area that you would need to accommodate vehicles moving about it. These vehicles are coming in and parking, and all of the units are stationary. They will all be nineteen-sixties and seventies airstreams that have been completely gutted, renovated, they will be insulated, they will be up to code, they will be, they'll have new wiring, new plumbing, every bit of it. We've taken them down to the ribs, and we've built them back up again. So we are prepared to offer something here to Kingman in a downtown area that's very blighted. We need the text amendment in order to be able to do that. And just to offer you some additional assurance and confidence that this will be, in addition to the downtown community, I would like to let you all know that I am the proud owner of 132 Oak Street downtown. I've owned it for about twelve years now, and it is one of the nicest places on Oak Street in Kingman. I don't anticipate that you would be disappointed with either the manner in which this is kept or the manner in which it's set up. So if you want the most up-to-date architectural plan, I'm happy to provide that to you.
That would be great.
We've brought copies here today.
Thank you.
I have a question for her. And then can we ask you a question?
Please do.
Ms. Knutson, is that how you say it?
Knutson, yeah, you say them all.
Okay. Thank you for explaining your vision, I really appreciate hearing that. It sounded like, but I couldn't tell from reading the information that was submitted with the application, are you a resident of Kingman?
Yes, I live in Rancho Santa Fe.
Okay. And can I ask, have you lived here for a long time?
Since two thousand and four.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone else have questions of the applicant? All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And does anyone else have a comment for us? All right, then I'm gonna close public comment and open up commission discussion. So just my two cents on the facts are, I love the idea, I'm hesitant to change the code, and I feel like a lot of people fall into that position. But I really do like the idea, and I would like it to be able to go forward. So what are some other thoughts on this?
For me, it's more a, I guess, a selfish reason to approve it as staff is given us, as a designer, there's a lot of, when you're laying out a site and you need that extra three feet, or, you know, if you can, if you are reducing an RV space from nineteen-hundred and fifty square feet to four fifty or four eighty or whatever it was, that's, that gives a lot of flexibility on the design side. But, you know, as a resident, allowing four times the number of spaces in an RV park is, that just seems daunting. And this, and it seems like this entire text amendment is for one site, it's not, it's gonna be all-encompassing for the entire city. If it was just for one site, I think it would be a lot different.
I always approach it just to, like, what is gonna happen in the future? And I know these, the applicants, they have a lot of energy. I know Lenore is one of the smartest people I've met in the county. She taught me about the Oxford comma. So she's very intelligent, and you can see it in the site plan. What I'm worried about is, you know, after, you know, maybe it changes hands or something, we have a, like a trailer park there that evolves into something we don't want, right with, right by the powerhouse. Now, we travel a bit, me and my family, I've been to Snowflake, and I can still clearly remember what a beautiful town it is, but there's a trailer park right in the middle of downtown, I can still see it in my mind's eye. And same with Williams, people tell me how pretty it is, and I say, what about that trailer park? And they say, oh, yeah, there's one right in the downtown strip, you know? It's, there's a reason for those barriers, which is why Rich kept bringing it up, in that it can actually, it can kind of contaminate an area, especially like downtown, that's like a time capsule that we're so fortunate to have. All the growth after World War II took place over Radar Hill. So we've got this almost abandoned, like from the nineteen forties and prior construction, which a lot of communities aren't blessed with. So I'm just really hesitant to include a new, a new mobile unit downtown, and especially to loosen the rules which would, might allow more to come downtown using this as a predicate. So that, that's my main concern, is just in the future, these good people might keep it up, and maybe something we don't want very close to the core of our history. And I don't know, that's all I have to say.
Gary, these trailer parks that you've seen in these other cities, were they rentals? Like, were they Airbnbs, or were they more permanent structures like the other ones that we know?
They were more permanent structures, yeah. They, yeah.
Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you. I see what you're saying, and I'm curious about whether there's a difference, if they're building this as an Airbnb situation, which looks really attractive and could, and should be pretty enticing if it's going to be a business to make money. I guess I'm curious about whether that's always required to remain an Airbnb, or whether that could turn into something where people could sell it to someone who could rent it out for long-term rentals, which could turn into something like you're not wanting...
Is that something that we can add to the CUP, Rich?
Well, Commissioner Noble, just to be clarified, we're not talking about the CUP at this point. But, you know, in the language in the conditional use permit that the council ultimately approves and that you recommend, you can, you can put a lot of things in that recommendation on numbers of units. There's something that came to mind as you were speaking that went out. Gary, you, oh, okay. Yeah, you could probably require those units to be of a certain era, say, within the age range that...
Could we add maximum-stay links to the language, too?
Well, I think, I think you would have to put language in there that these are permanent, permanently placed units, they may be replaced with another permanent unit that's hooked to the sewer, that's ground-set and, because you don't want it turned into an RV park.
Yeah, to keep it from being a permanent residence.
Right. I think you can, we can, we can work language into it that would state that.
So Rich, can I ask you another question? Is there any way to work this into a variance?
Yeah.
Is there, is there any way to not change the code, but find something unique about this that allows us to make it a variance? Because I can just see RV parks in this town running with this idea. And the way she has it laid out, it almost sounds like a, like a Disney world of, you know, clamping. Right, exactly. And so I'm just wondering, is there any way we can put this as like a, you know, themed situation that's gonna be very different than a bunch of people putting in a ton of trailers in one space?
Well, like I said, when we were speaking earlier, a variance typically is for something unusual about a property that's, someone is seeking relief from the code for, because they cannot meet the requirements. And it can't be a self-created situation.
It can't be a what kind of situation?
It can't be self-created. So in this situation, Ms. Knutson has a property downtown, it's not sufficiently large enough to have an RV park. It's, it's, it's the owner's choice to want to do this at this location, or it just says you can't do it at that location. So that's really a self-created situation, it doesn't lend itself to a variance. So I think the text amendment option is the right, we're on the right path.
Okay, so then tell me, how minimally could we change the code to allow this to happen? Instead of all of these things, I'm sure all of them aren't required to make this happen. So how minimally could we change the code to allow this to go forward?
Well, I would say the minimum, when we first were looking at this, was probably the size. Well, I would say the, the minimum, when we first were looking at this, was probably the size. That, that for this to even be considered, the size needs to be changed. Number one.
The size of the lot?
Minimum, so the minimum lot size, yeah. The other thing was probably on screening, making that, the applicants asked for that to be open. We're suggesting that it be left to the commission's decision so it doesn't become a universal requirement throughout the city. That would probably be the other thing. Just some non-controversial things in there, like the open fires. We're fine with that language. I, I don't know. I know that they're, they're concerned about the recreational open space requirement. They would be required to put it in a 2,500 square foot recreational area because that's the minimum currently. So I don't know, I don't know what their area is currently. So I don't know how that affects their design.
Also, keep, keep in mind on this too, guys, that this, a lot of that, the thoughts that you're coming, coming to us with, we put the thought into. Remember that all the questions that you guys are having about what it allows, every, everything in these zoning areas requires a conditional use permit. So it's, it's not like we're making these changes and they will be able to just come put in applications and be able to build whatever they want, wherever they want. Remember that it does require a CUP, which means it is required to come before the Planning and Zoning Commission prior to moving forward.
I'm, I'm a little concerned about it being used as precedent though, you know? Like pointing out, well, they did it over there, then that's usually a pretty good indicator that they're going to get it done. You know, if somebody wants to copycat or even be a little more liberal with it. Anyway, that's where I'm coming from.
Can I ask a clarifying question? And I promise it's not to be contentious. I haven't been on the commission long, but I remember a situation where a builder was requesting to, to use two of the lots in a development to put up a billboard. Was that a variance that they were requesting?
No, it wasn't. It was, he required several, several things. Minor general plan amendment to change that property to commercial, a commercial designation and a rezoning. And then had that been approved, it, the sign itself would have, would have had to come back to you for the conditional use permit. That didn't, well, it hasn't happened because, well, I don't need to go into that, but it didn't, it hasn't happened, so.
But that was a minor change to the city plan?
It was a minor land use amendment to the, to the general plan and a rezoning is what was required.
So that's similar to this? Is that?
Not, not really, because, because this is amending the text of the zoning ordinance and those were actions to amend, really to amend the map of, of the zoning, of our zoning, our zoning map.
Okay, so I think I understand why that wouldn't work. Thank you.
I'd just like to say that I, yeah, I've lived downtown 18 years, you know? And I, I take issue with you saying you have the nicest house on Oak Street. I live on the other end of it, you know, Oakland 7th. I don't know, I'm just coming at it from somebody who lives down here. I, I've seen, I've seen problematic, even rentals, not even necessarily trailer parks, but where there's density. And I know there's a push downtown for tiny homes and I'm all for it, but I'm not for tiny lots. You know, and I understand what you're doing. It's more like a hotel, which is kind of surprises me. We can't approach this through like a hotel zoning or something. It's just the fact that we're making trailer homes more dense across the, the city really concerns me a bit. And just the aesthetics of downtown, I know there's competing visions, like there's the, the shipping containers cut in half and put in front of certain buildings, that sort of rust and stuff. I don't know. I, to me, downtown Kingman is like almost quasi cowboy history from the 1800s, you know, when things were built pretty well. Just the vision of, of 1960s toaster trailers, you know, it has a place, but that's not really my, my impression as a resident of what downtown should be. So I've, I've got several issues with this one and I'm going to vote against it. Sorry.
Can you go over what the, what kind of conditions can be included in a CUP?
So I, Gary, did you bring, you brought your book with you, right? Let's.
Gary, can I ask you a question while he's looking for that? What, maybe you already answered this, but I'm thinking about other cities that, that people like to stay in cities when they are on vacation to experience that downtown feel. And it sounded like maybe what you were saying is you're okay with that if the lot size is bigger so that you're not congesting. Is that the issue that you have or?
It's one of them. Just the fact that across the town, we're going to be making these denser. But also, I don't know, it, it's, it's one of aesthetics, but also the, the fact that these, these parks can change over time and we don't have any control over it subsequently, you know? It's like we're planting a seed and we don't know what it's going to grow into eventually. So like it is an example of a town that's done it right, you can look at Prescott, you know, that central courtyard they have. They have a lot of history there. It's not, it's, there's plaques on everything. They kept it all up. When they put in a new business, somebody in their, their city is enforcing that and making sure that they honor their history there, you know, rather with, rather than completely rebooting it. Like imagine that central square with shipping containers cut in half in front of all the buildings. It's not going to happen in Prescott, you know? And they're complimented as a beautiful town. I think we might, we might benefit from learning from a place like that. Now, that being said, they do actually have, I stayed at an Airbnb that was kind of 1950s themed. It was an old hotel, a 50s hotel, which they re-venerate, you know, rejuvenated. And I think that fit pretty well. It was in the outskirts of town. I don't, just right there with the powerhouse, right next door to what we're talking about. I could just see, like my kid, when he gets older, walking past this dilapidated set of trailers and wondering why it was allowed to be put in there, right there next to Dolly Sturris attraction. I hope that answers your question. I don't know, it's kind of a stream of thought.
Yeah, it's given me something to think about. Thank you.
If I, if I may, I could read through the section of the, of the code regarding the conditions of approval for CUPs. I'll just read verbatim. It says, "The planning commission may attach conditions of approval to a conditional use permit as necessary to carry out the purposes of the general plan, other adopted plans and findings of subsection E", which is another section in this, in this area. "Some of the conditions may include, but are not limited to, limitations on size, bulk and location requirements, traditional landscaping or buffers, provisions for adequate ingress and egress, mitigation of adverse environmental impacts, and other conditions such as duration of the permit." So you can set a limitation to how long the permit is good for. Hours of operation and time limits on construction. And the conditions of approval will only be imposed if they are necessary to ensure that the intent of the purpose of the code is met, it's compatible and complementary with the development of the property and the provision of the, of appropriate off-site improvements is fulfilled. And some of the things that the commission can look at when considering a CUP is bulk regulations, access to pedestrian traffic and vehicular circulation, adequacy of the site and open space provisions, proposed style and siding of the structures, relationship to the surrounding neighborhood, signage and outdoor lighting. And I've also mentioned that this location is actually, and again, I don't want to talk too much about this specific location, but it is within the historical overlay district. There will be a concept plan that will be, should this text amendment be approved, that will be going before the historic preservation or the Heritage Preservation Commission. So they will have an opportunity to weigh in on this, on this project as well.
Okay, a question for you, Rich. So you said they can expire. Is that correct? The CUP?
It does state, state that a time limit can be placed on, on the duration of the, of the permit.
Is it possible to do something like, and I don't know if this would help you at all, have the CUP approval for this one applicant and have it expire and need to be renewed if it were sold?
I don't think you can tie it to an applicant. I think you can tie it to a timeframe.
Five years, something like that.
In which you would perhaps have language, we will have to check on this, on the legality of it, perhaps have language that would be required to be reviewed after a certain number of years by the commission again and see if this, if the operations of the, of the project is continuing in accordance with your, your, your approval.
Okay. I don't know if that would help you at all?
Well, I just, like, would the city take the park if they didn't make the? Yeah, I don't know. That seems, it seems like you nip things you don't want in the bud to begin with, rather than after the fact. But please vote the way you guys want to. I just, I just have my own opinion.
I personally would really like to go to see this lot and to try to visualize it before I made any decisions about it. I, I haven't thought a lot about the perspective of people who live downtown and I respect that you live downtown and have some, some personal feelings about it, which I would too. So I respect that. The positives that I see are that it provides, it, it could provide an attractive place for people to experience Kingman, which could support the restaurants and businesses downtown and provide opportunity for there to be more of a walking city. So those are just my initial thoughts about it.
And I agree with you on that, Jen, because I, I can tell you a little bit about the property because I used to have my dog groomed it from your pet. It, it's trashed. That area is trashed, absolutely trashed. So, I mean, putting just about anything on it would be an improvement. So initially. Initially. So there is that, and part of the general plan is in putting, you know, improving and, and reviving areas. And so I, I'm for it on that frame of reference because, I mean, burning it to the ground is just about all that could improve what's there right now. However, with that being said, I just, I'm slightly worried about the can of worms we might be opening with a text amendment. And I'm trying to think if I can come up with any other way around. What are your thoughts, Jed?
Um, I, I guess, I'd like to know the city's authority to pull the permit after it expires. It sounds like you'd need to talk to the city attorney on that.
There is a time limit already built into the, to the CUP. So it does state that it becomes null and void one year after the effective date unless the building permit has been issued and construction has begun diligently. And as far as there being a, a future time limit, again, I would, we would explore that with our attorney if, if that's something that we need to consider. But I understand, I know that in the past, there's been CUPs that have had review times built into them.
And so what happens when they don't get renewed? That's the ultimate question.
If they don't get reviewed?
Renewed.
Oh, they don't get renewed.
Yeah, if they bring back a, a CUP after, let's say, a four-year term and, you know, the planning commission denies it.
Well, the, if there's a, if there's a reason to deny it because conditions are not being met under the terms of the conditional use permit, you can do that. Any applicant has the ability to appeal the commission's decision to the council. I think I said earlier, I think I, I forgot for a moment that it doesn't go to the council unless it's appealed. But there is that option. The council can still have final say if something is appealed.
And so, so with that, there are, and, and we actually have those available to us right now. We do have legal ramifications for use on a property that it's, it's not zoned for. So that, that stuff's already in place and we can take those actions if we have to. Obviously, it's not something we like to do, but, but we absolutely can.
So I think you guys have all been hashing this out a lot longer than we have. What's everybody's recommendation on staff?
Our, our recommendation is what has been provided to you. We, we definitely have, we've been back and forth with the applicant, back and forth within our division. What can we do? Mr. Waters brought up the, the portion about a hotel. We looked at every bit of piece of that. How, how, how can we do this is kind of what we're looking at. And this seemed like the best way to go about it because it doesn't change as much as we would have to change, you know, if we were to allow this to happen. Again, it comes down to the size thing, but in, as far as everything goes, you know, there's, there's parameters that we've already discussed with them that we'll be putting into place that is going to, as an agency having jurisdiction, like say the fire department, for instance. And there, there's some things that we can put into place through the fire code that is similar to what a hotel is. However, you can't require it in, in, in like this type of situation, right? But because they're permanent structures and they're this, they're that, those things, without a doubt, all the life safety measures for inside of these facilities, there won't be an issue with those because we, we will make sure that that happens, right? We've, we've even gone that far into the code to where, okay, well, if you do this, you have to do this. If you do that, you have to do that. If this is a requirement, then that's a requirement, right? So, and we all know where those are and we've gone down almost every avenue. So again, this is not just something that's between planning and zoning. It's the building department, the fire department, you know? So it's kind of, it's kind of one of those things to where, without really giving a whole lot of, of opinion because we really can't do that. We've given you what our recommendations are and so that's kind of where, where we sit on it. That makes sense.
If I could just interject one last thing here, then Gary and I were just having a quick aside conversation here. And this, this would go to the concern that this is something that could end up being widespread throughout the city, that you could get lots of these maybe substandard parks happening around the city. We could craft the language in a way that these, some or all of the condition, or changes to this, to this, to the RV park standards are only applicable, say, in the transit zone. So it's not, it's really going to be more geared to this property. Even though we're talking, not technically talking about the property, we could, we could write that language that way. If that's, makes you more comfortable.
So it seems like there are two concerns. One concern is are the possible consequences throughout the city, which you just suggested something that I, I thought that was a good idea. And then the second concern is, what is this actually going to do to our downtown? Is it going to do what we're hoping it will do, which will build it and, and make a better downtown? Or are there, are there possible unintended consequences? I'm curious as to whether, when you were looking at this, you saw any precedence for this in any downtowns? I, I tried to do a little bit of research, but all the Airbnb airstream rentals I saw were more set in, in nature-type scenarios and not in downtowns. So I was curious as to whether you saw any precedence for this.
I don't know that we looked at the location. We did look a little bit at other cities. I, I know there's some places, I know Bisbee has one. And I think in some cases, they are probably just older. are probably just older trailer parks that existed that were then converted into these Airbnb-type, so they probably didn't have to go through all this process because they were already in existence.
Well, just given the, the compliance that you were just mentioning, like, making it ADA accessible and everything, with all those fees and everything, I mean, could you just build a hotel? It sounds like it's going to be expensive to get these air, airstreams up to speed. I know that's partly how you're marketing these, these trailers is to, you know, to make them kind of like a kitschy thing, but at that point, why not? This is just a, just a thought, like, you could probably build a hotel in keeping with the local vernacular and kind of avoid all of this, you know, since we're already pretty much zoned for commercial right in that area. Just a thought.
So I guess with what Rich added with making this specific to a more downtown location, that helps me not have so much of a problem with it. I also, I like the idea of being able to infill the downtown area more because we have so many awkwardly small lots. So I do understand that, and that would help me a lot not be worried about what would be happening in our other RV parks. Honestly, even if their trailer park ran, got run down, it would be nicer than what's down there right now. So I almost wonder if, if we limited it to the downtown area and put in some sort of language for a review needed on the CUP, if that wouldn't solve some of our issues? Because I do like the property.
I think having the screen, some kind of screening in place too, in case, you know.
Goes, by the way, all things.
I think just allowing the precedent downtown and allowing it downtown could result in more, and that, I'm not in favor of that, sorry.
Yeah, I also was thinking about that. I'm not, not in favor of it, but I'm, I also, my preference would be to look at this. We, our next meeting is in a couple of weeks, I think, to look at this. I'd like to look at the property and just think about it and think, think about the implications of it. That would be my preference. I'm not entirely opposed to it or entirely in favor of it.
Well, and the other thing I think to think about too is that if we did limit it to downtown, for example, that, that narrows down the area that it even applies to altogether. And then with the idea that the individuals who would be coming to us would be applying for a CUP, so they would need to come before us. And the precedent for approving this could be significantly different than the precedent for approving, say, another RV park that was not nice in, in going in. So I think it necessarily wouldn't be, you know, just assumed that we could put in, you know, another similar situation that wasn't something that was going to improve the area with a coffee shop and an ice cream place and Airbnb situation. That's just my thought about it. Wouldn't necessarily have to run away.
Okay. I'm going to close the commission discussion temporarily and reopen public comment, and then you can approach, and just state your name one more time for the record.
It's my understanding that if I possess a conditional use permit that's granted, it is permissible to only continue the same activity, meaning an Airbnb in a vintage retro park. If I die and my children take it over and they don't have my same standards for upkeep, or if they turn it into long-term rentals, I am no longer operating, it's no longer operating under the conditional use permit and wouldn't be permitted. So it seems like there would be some protection if I'm understanding the conditional use permit right. If the use changes, I no longer have permission to be there, and that is the protection for the future. You know, Kingman has plenty of old hotels that are an embarrassment, frankly, up and down the same stretch. You know, we're talking about property in its current condition that is deplorable. We have an opportunity to do something great here. If in the future, the change, the use of the property changes after I'm gone and out of the picture, then the permit's gone. At least that's my understanding. So there's an assurance there that it will be operated for one purpose as long as that conditional use permit is in place. If the use changes, they have to get a different conditional use permit, and they'd be coming back here to you.
Can I ask you a question since you're back up here?
Sure.
Where did you get the idea and vision for this? Have you seen it other places?
Yes.
I just, I would love to understand a precedent for this. I'm, yeah.
Well, first of all, you know, the, the notion of Route 66 has experienced a significant resurgence. We're coming up on the 100th anniversary of Route 66 in 2026, and we are avid followers of the Route 66 groups. In addition to that, I heard, I think it was you that mentioned earlier, the term glamping. It has taken on a whole new shine in the United States, across the country. We are aware of the Bisbee Park, we're aware of Escalante, which is more of a nature setting. There's also a park in, in California that I had shared with planning and zoning, and also in Las Vegas, on the north side of Las Vegas.
When you say park, do you mean similar to what you're visualizing? Okay.
Yes, airstream park. Airstream is kind of the gold standard when it comes to glamping. And again, because we are looking at a vintage retro vibe, we do believe that it fits in with the downtown community and the spirit and intent of the development. We could continue to have dilapidated, deplorable buildings as our scenic landscape, but I would prefer, as a resident, to not have that happen. I would prefer to be part of the solution. And again, I am applying for, once I pass, hopefully, these hurdles, a conditional use permit that allows me to use it for one purpose only. If anyone has a different purpose after I'm gone, there's no longer a conditional use permit.
Why do you like this idea of the airstreams as opposed to something like renovating some of the houses that still exist or building a hotel or renovating a hotel? I know the renovation of these hotels is, it doesn't make sense in probably most of the cases, but.
I have done that. I renovated Oak Street, and it is one of the nicest buildings. I won't say it's the nicest, but I'll say it's one of the nicest buildings on Oak Street. I have been a part of Kingman's fabric in that respect. I've already done that. But we are talking about property on Route 66.
Uh huh.
And that is the, the difference for this project, is being right on Route 66, being part of the, the driving community on Route 66 and also the walking community on Route 66. The powerhouse has been mentioned a couple of times in terms of visibility. If you stand in the parking lot right now, what you see is junk. What you see, and there's one out there right now because Saint Vincent de Paul keeps putting mattresses in the alley, which then make it to my property where people are sleeping overnight. We could continue to look at that, or we can make some decisions to move forward and update that property. Again, the safety net being the conditional use permit.
Would you visualize most people staying like one to two days? Is that how you think the Route 66?
Two days, yes.
Two days is, okay.
We're looking at, you know, an Airbnb model. Again, these are two-person units, so I don't anticipate a big family scene. When we, when we looked at and researched the demographics of people traveling Route 66, it's typically couples in their 50s and up that remember Route 66 and the, the whole vintage nature of it. And along with some younger demographic that is interested in reviving the history of Route 66. There are people that will come in, stay for a couple of days, walk the community, spend money, and then continue on their Route 66 journey. That's the majority of our market.
So the two-person units would kind of cut down on the partying scene a little bit, maybe?
Yeah, we, we don't anticipate that being the clientele at all. First of all, it's not going to be at that price point, and second of all, there'll be two-people units. There is, you know, a goal that we might, also, airstreams are of limited sizes. You know, right now, I can tell you, we have 30-foot airstreams that we're renovating. We have four at this moment. We have the option to pick up a couple more, but we are looking at units in the 30-foot range that have a regular bathroom plumbed in them, one queen-size bed in them, and then a small living area. They will not have cooking units in there, there won't be stoves, because we will not, one, assume the risk of the safety hazards of people cooking, and two, most importantly, we want them to walk the downtown community and go to the restaurants and pubs on Beale Street.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much. All right, I'm going to close public comment again and open back up commission discussion.
I mean, some of our options are, we can either table this for a later date if you have more information that you're looking for from staff or that you need, or we can choose to make a motion on one of the recommended options.
I'll make a motion to deny, just to get that out of the way. See what you guys think.
Do we have any seconds for that? All right, I don't see any, so that motion fails.
Okay.
Next.
Well, in respect of the downtown residents and in respect of the fact that we're changing, we're proposing to change the city plan, I would prefer to table it for two weeks, but perhaps I'm overthinking this.
I guess I don't, I don't mind approving it if we can get a change in language that limits it to the downtown. And we are careful in how we approve a CUP. Those, I would not mind approving it under those conditions.
And striking the language, removing the screen wall?
Yes.
Striking what language?
Is this language you're referring to in, under the screening?
Yeah.
And you'd be interested in striking which part of it?
On the street side, keeping the screen wall on the street side.
So that would mean that all RV parks will continue to have to be screened as opposed to being an option that the commission could consider?
Because it does say we have to approve it.
Yeah, okay. We could do that.
Can I, Rich, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
You had mentioned that this goes before the heritage preservation. Is it a society or a?
It's another commission.
Okay.
That, that's only if this, if this text amendment is ultimately approved by the council, then the next step would be Heritage Preservation Commission because it is within historic overlay district. It would be a concept plan similar to what you have before you that they would review. They would then make a, a, a decision on that, and then the next step would have that, would be the CUP would come before this commission.
So they, they could either, they, they would make a recommendation to approve or deny, or?
They, they would actually, they actually would make a decision on, on it, and then there's a number of options there. I guess they have the decision, they could deny it, but that decision is also appealable to the council. It's similar to a CUP, but they, they would, it's a little, written a little differently. They basically make a determination whether or not this site is acceptable within the, within the district, and they have a number of criteria that they have to kind of look, look over as part of their review.
Rich, what was the, the, was the transect for this? What language would?
So I think you would, we, what we can do, I mean, if you are prepared to make a recommendation tonight, we can, we can work that language in here that indicates, for example.
I'm just asking for the.
The, you know, and probably could, could cover all the sections that are changed here, that those, we could break it out and say that's for the transit zones only, and we could work that language into the, into your recommendation. If that's your, if that's your.
Rich, there's also, one of the transit zones is basically only in the downtown for Andy Devine.
Yes, this is actually in the T5 MS, which is.
Which one is it?
T5 MS, which is transit zone five Main Street. We also have the other transit zone, I think it's T5G, I believe is general, which is Beale Street. So you could even get it down to just the, the one that's along Andy Devine, which is basically, it more or less corresponds with the historic overlay district.
T5?
It's called T5 MS.
And that's just along Beale Street?
Yes, and unfortunately, I don't have the map in front of me, but it's, it's long, Andy Devine, I'm sorry, Andy Devine only, from, I think it's First to about Eighth Street, I believe. So we could work that language in here if that's the, if that's the recommendation of the, of the commission.
Thank you.
Sure.
I, I like what has recently been done with the Hilltop Hotel. That's an Airbnb, local chiropractor quit her job and, you know, set, fixed it up. With all the old buildings we have just laying around downtown, it seems like we could, somebody could actually renovate some of those to be Airbnb's. So again, I'm just not sold that we need a, a trailer park downtown, so that's where I'm at right now.
All right, does anybody else have a motion?
I'll make a motion, make a motion to approve option C as presented by staff to the P and Z, or as a P and Z text amendment only for transit zone T5 MS on Andy Devine between First and Eighth.
All right, well, I'll second that. So we have a motion and a second. Don, can we get a roll call vote on that? Chair Goss, approve. Commissioner Noble?
Yes.
Commissioner Waters?
Deny.
Commissioner Swapp?
Approve.
Motion's been approved.
All right, motion carries.
So just to, to let everybody know, we, this has been advertised, if there was a commission recommendation tonight, this has been advertised to go before the council on February 1st. So we will work up the language for the ordinance with your, your recommendation, and then we'll take it to the council, and the council will, will review that recommendation and potentially could approve the text amendment at that meeting.
Great, thank you so much. All right, let's move along to our last step, which is announcement by commission members. Limited to announcements, availability, or attendance at conferences and seminars, requests for agenda items for future meetings, and requests for reports from staff. No discussion on any of these. Does anyone have anything to bring up? All right, I see none, so can we get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, ladies and gentlemen.